He's not here. Let me ask you.
One, two, three, testing.
Testing, testing.
Ding 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 ding.
Morning.
Nine thirty exactly.
Yes, your life.
We're on, alright, well then.
Like I said, it's me that's a little slow on here.
I call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order, let the record show it is nine thirty A.M. and all five members of the court are present. We are streaming live on our YouTube channel, and if you're watching and you'd like to call in and make a comment, the phone number is nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for our invocation and pledges, Commissioner Shipp has the honors today.
Y'all pray with me. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for a beautiful day, Father, we thank you for many blessings, Lord. We just ask that you would be with us today during this meeting, Father, that you help us make decisions that would benefit our city and our county, Father, that this would be the best place to live in the state of Texas. And, Lord, we lift up the families to you that are down in Kirk County, Lord, and the surrounding counties down there, that you give them peace and comfort, Lord, as they're going through these difficult times. And, Lord, we pray for the weather, Lord, the cooler weather and rain, Lord, we pray for grass fires, and we ask that you would be with our first responders, Lord. And, Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to serve you today, and we just ask that all these things would be in your glorified name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the banner of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our victory flag, I pledge allegiance to the League of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Scott. We'll move to public comments, I have a couple of public comments. On Friday and Saturday, I spoke to both our consultant for the solar farms and the consultant for the solar farms. So, you know, both sides. Our guy said he was sending, sending comments to them about things that are in that new state law without removal. So, that's what they talked about, or what he said they talked about. And I asked the Tidest Tapadere guy for an update on when specifically they're gonna get their environmental study done, and, you know, how are we gonna get a copy of it? So, that's been a constant theme of questions. So, he said he was gonna talk to them today and see what he can find out for us. So, that's all I have to update on that.
Has the environmental study changed from the period?
Yeah, so they'll go, they'll actually go out and they'll see, okay, are there any endangered birds in that area? Are there any salamanders that are, you know, is there any indigo around? You know, that kind of stuff to see if, so, yeah, it does. They'll go jig around and walk around and take samples and stuff, is what I imagine that they did. But I hope to have an update soon as to what that is. Are there any other public comments? Eric?
I just wanted to take this to be to update the Commissioners Court on a couple of utility issues. It's Thursday, the city council is holding a public hearing on increase to water and sewer rates in the city, but primarily the way it impacts the counties and the water. The cost to provide water just continues to increase, recapitalization, keeping the water treatment plant alive. Council's proposing a seven percent increase to water rates. I'll be giving a detailed presentation on that at Thursday's council meeting, it will be in a public comment. Do you know, we provide water in one form or another to a large area of the unincorporated part of the county, to the North Delma Fire Supply Corporation. Apparently, they have passed an agreement with Bryson, Bob Morton, and Newcastle. But the cost for us just to make and provide the water, like everything else apparently these days, just continues to go up, and that's the primary reason for the seven percent increase on that. We're headed on the way to changing our garbage contractor, moving from waste connections to KC dumpsters. As you go out on Fourth Street, you may notice some staging of dumpsters down there on West Street, just off one. We're getting ready for that change, and that's coming up. Once again, you know, any questions on that, we'll be publishing information as we get closer to that date. We just wanted to give you that. And one other, in case anyone is interested, we're in the final stages of testing that water line and pump station that's going from the city's sewer treatment plant up to, up at 5009, to the proposed site of the plug hydrogen facility. We run water through it, but it's a fairly complex system, and the monitoring, communication, and determining quality of water, and how much to be pumped. We've run into some issues there, we'd hope to be done by the end of July, it looks like probably the end of August, early September, we should say that it's done, and then what we'll be doing is just periodically running water, either to exercise the pumps, or when plugs get started, they have some water construction needs, so we'll be pumping the water through that line.
Have they given you, give you sort of idea of when they are gonna get started?
I'm waiting to get a presentation from their liaison, because I understand that they recently had a, their CEO and Department of Energy had a briefing on what was in that, what they call a one big beautiful bill, along guarantees, and that was very positive, and I'm waiting on his formal public announcement and the presentation that they had on that. But every indication are that seems to be going forward, and then that will allow them to reestablish the project.
I haven't talked to him in a while, but he was very optimistic that they were gonna get approved.
Yeah, it makes sense, I think.
Yeah. Oh, I know you, I know you probably know about this, but apparently there was a big water bill passed through the legislature, so there's gonna be grant opportunities and low interest loan opportunities for water projects going forward, so.
That's a, I went to another conference where there were folks from the water development board there. This year, you know, they had that, they had additional monies to put towards the ready day fund, and they kind of split some of it up for this, Texas fiscal year began in July, there's $2 billion in grants available, focused primarily on water supply issues, which is, everyone here knows, we're thinking about this, how do we get water up in D.C., which I think would be a good fit for that. Two billion this year with an additional billion in the next, in their two-year budget cycle, and they're gonna try to fund that all throughout there. So, we're hoping that there is additional grant monies available, particularly to help with water supply.
How long do you think it's gonna take to change the dumpsters out? That's a lot of dumpsters.
It is, we've got a plan, he's gonna, if he can, he's gonna start about mid-August, but, you know, you've only got one place for your dumpsters, your location, and having two sitting side by side, we're happy to work through that with individual businesses, but as we can, we're gonna try and start about mid-August, change it a lot. That's gonna be, it's gonna be hassle, no doubt.
Because both of them are gonna have to be doing the process and kind of figure things out when you get done, so.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult. Thank y'all very much.
Thanks, Eric. Any other public comments? Alright, we'll move to the receipt of the hot tax for June twenty twenty-five from the Wildcat Ranch and Resort, We also got a June twenty twenty-five hot tax report from the Cabinet Salt Fork Ranch, $48.60. Item number four, review, consider the, review and consider the county clerk minutes from the previous meeting, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number five, consider the Treasurer's Financial Report, updates on securities pledged. No reports today. Item number six, consider the Auditor's Budget of Amendments and Doubters Payable, Ms. Roberts.
She's on with us.
I'm glad you're still here on Texas time and not on Colorado time.
Talk to me this time tomorrow. So vouchers today, the total is $64,028.05, and out of the general fund is $27,853.86. And he's gonna take, you know, I think everything is just pretty basic. He did pay the.
Inversion.
So, every year, out of the little funds at the back of the courthouse security and the court reporter, we write a check for $10,000 out of the courthouse security, and we put it into the general fund to help cover the BANA there. And there's a little court reporter fund that gets approved from the criminal justice, and we write a check every year for $4,500 and put it in general, and they are both on this run, so. So, we wrote a check to ourselves.
There we go.
So move.
Move a motion for Commissioner Wiley, we have a second for Commissioner Crestwell. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero.
Okay, I also have a quote, I actually have two different quotes. This one is from Judge Joey over in Albee, about the locks on the annex, I think I'll talk to him about that. So, he was gonna pay for this out of his tech fund, and he does have the money, it's $1,461.
I think that's a good use of his tech funds. Do we have a motion to approve Judge Joey, I wanna say Judge Judy. To approve that?
So move.
Motion for Commissioner Shuck, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero.
Okay, I also.
Sorry, Joey.
Yeah, I know, I always say that. I have a quote from InVision, and it is for the, what do you call the same drop off that you talked about. $1,015.98, that's for sight and sound and everything.
What's the, that's just the camera and the installation, is there like a maintenance with it?
It does not.
Should not have.
It's not gonna be at the court, but they all need annex?
Yes, that's what we talked about, whether it be the annex, the police station.
It's gonna be on the south side of the annex, over there by the parking position.
Okay.
So, is it viewed like in dispatch or something?
Who's gonna watch it, yeah?
I thought we talked about putting Joey's office, that way somebody needed a copy of what went on, he can have it there.
It's a good place to put it. Plus, you know, means if something's wrong, he's the one who wants going out there, not a clerk.
So, three hundred and something like that is for configuration, installation, and training, so they do.
Alright.
But can we pay it out, I think I can move money around in that annex budget.
Alright, let's make a record vote of that. Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of a, what do we, what do we call that, the child?
It's a safe exchange.
Safe exchange camera system to be installed on the south side of the Albee Annex.
I might get a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Crestwell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Craig. Any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero.
We had voted this once, it's be done.
We had voted on the quote.
Now we voted on the quote, so it's done, should have been a done deal.
Okay, I also, and the sheriff's on his way, now we talked to y'all about the duck issues that they're having.
What issue?
Those, the duck.
The duck nuts?
I thought you said quack quack.
Let me go make y'all talk to this, and maybe he'll be here to talk about this, and the only quote I have.
Has our insurance company worked on it?
Yes, and it is not.
It's not insured?
No.
Why?
But Marsha talked to, to the adjuster. It's something in the.
What it is, is the ducts wasn't done right beginning with whenever they built the company did. And the ducking with the wrap running is to prevent it from sweating.
Yeah.
Well, it was not done properly, so it would sweat, and that's what's caused the problem.
And that, why do you buy insurance? Because how are we gonna know?
Ask Marsha, I'll tell you exactly what to do.
You would tell me.
Hey, the more I learn about the insurance, the more I'm not sure it's worth even having.
Until you have a big disaster.
Yeah.
Then you pay third of it when you're coming home.
But anyway, this is, I mean, this is the only one, I asked him if he got any other quotes, I didn't know who else.
I'm gonna get a quote from the guy that does our maintenance there.
At Lansing.
Lansing.
That's, that's, I don't know what this one is, but it's not, the county does it, it says something, it doesn't say just Lansing. And Marsha can tell y'all that.
Why are we not covered on the sheriff's office?
Same as you did.
The piping in sheriff's office, why are we not covered by insurance?
Because it was, the way it was done, it wasn't done by a disaster, it was done, it wasn't done right.
What's the point of having insurance?
Didn't they have an inspector?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, did they approve it?
Yeah.
Then that should say it's right, it should be covered by the insurance.
What's the cost you're paying? Of course, the guy that has that company's not around here.
The one that done the inspection, and the one that started the insurance.
No, he does the job, he's no longer with us. But still, I mean.
It is.
It's everybody.
There's a lot of things in the way that it is still, I think, had issues, it was redesigned, it's not, you know, but.
It, they, there were so many things that were found that.
I was almost gonna call them.
That's what's the sad part, like the dam of the dryer was not painted out, it was just painted in the center.
The things in the toilets that.
Hey, think about the dryer.
There's humidity in there, that's what caused the sweat.
That's what caused all of the, it was not painted.
Things in the toilet that are supposed to help chomp up things, well, they were having plumbing issues, they were putting back those. And so, it was this way, here's all this stuff coming that, they'll put everything down, hold it, and they're just gonna do it.
But that's due to not paid.
So once they got that.
It wasn't an actual.
So we hired an inferior contractor to build our jail?
We didn't know it, but he started cutting corners, and the, and I'm not sure that dryer blowing for all these years back, all that into the space didn't cause a, we're probably, to be honest, like it.
The bonding?
Was that a company's?
The bonding company should still be, the one you got to bond through. Now, I understand the company's going to. You write a bond.
I think it's here. Was that?
Perfect. Perfect timing, so we're talking about, why in the world is this not covered by insurance?
That's all good, just, he said, just didn't meet the criteria, he couldn't find anything in there that would make him think that it was a national disaster or.
What about natural, whatever.
Any kind of disaster.
Yes, but.
National disaster, county disaster, weather disaster.
The thing at the dryer, and all of that, causing humidity.
The contractor may not be there, but he had to be bonded in order to get the job. Well, the bonding company is still there, and the job, if it was not in proportion, then the bonding company should still hold the bond on, on the project.
I don't know.
So that there's a statute of protection.
This right here.
No, I understand, but we may have a way of getting our money, but you know.
This part right here is not as bad as I need to get, yeah, but the other part is.
But if you do this work, and how far the bond person gonna investigate to see if it's reliable?
Take a lot of pictures. You had inspection.
I did, right, and I know the person who did the inspection.
Well, you got that documentation. And you've got the insurance company, that we've helped us done inspections, and it's not there. So you've got two inspections that have been done.
The worst, the worst thing that I'm worried about right now is getting somebody to come up here and suck out the water. Get that, the rest of it? That part's one of them.
Give that dryer.
It'll be, it's best, we just gotta get. So I gotta get somebody to come up here and suck it out.
Well, I don't, I'm all for that, but I also wanna investigate.
He will, yeah.
I wanna investigate the bonds of the issue like that is.
Let's say we gotta do it.
And I agree, and I know the people who call, and I'll come down, we'll see if you know what.
Okay. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the HVAC bill for repairs of the jail, eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars?
Judge, could I have a point of information?
Yeah.
We're dealing with something similar, and one of the things that we found is beneficial is, if you go ahead and file a claim, knowing that it's gonna be rejected, the insurance company is required to give you a reason for rejection, which it sounds like design. If the bond is still valid, you can use that as a legally supporting document to say, investigation was conducted, it was your design, you owe us under the bond.
Well, I did file, like, in our jester pack, so we need something.
And to get his report, his.
I'll, I'm gonna face it.
Thank you, that's great, thank you.
But I did file, I'm filing.
Okay, did someone, someone make a motion to do the repair? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Remember, this is just for the reinstallation of the pipe.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not what I want to have to have.
You don't even, you don't even ask that one.
I don't even know. Hey, see, I have something here that we're gonna look, hopefully, that should be, I mean, there may be those.
You can't use your labor pool?
I can, except that, talk, talk, talk to my future maintenance guy. Best way to be doing this, the safest way to be doing this was to be having it sucked out and not having them in there. Where, you know. I'm not even worried about the pipe, I'm worried about their health, that's my, that's my main problem. The health is what I'm concerned about.
But you have some, that's, yeah, you don't wanna have potential future.
Right, so we get the professionals to come in and clean it up, be done, be done with it. As far as they fixed that, the initial problem Friday, and got everything where it's operated.
Alright, so we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second? Commissioner Craig, have a second, all in favor of this repair? Any opposed, motion for it?
I guess so.
Motion passes five zero.
Since you wanna put that, I guess so.
So, I'm gonna pay for it out of jail maintenance, but I'm not sure there's enough money to cover it.
Well, let's pay it out of there, and then we'll see what we have to do there.
I'll call the guys who did the inspections and have them come down, and we'll just kinda go over and look at it.
Awesome.
I will get the report.
Say they rejected me.
I will get all of that documentation, this report and all of that, and get it back.
And he did say he was gonna take a report back to his supervisor, and then go over and look at it, just make sure, see if he missed something.
Perfect.
Okay.
Can you stay for about five or ten more minutes?
Sure.
This next item is the elected official salaries, so I need everyone to sign that you've been notified. Alright.
We're reduced to sheriff's office. We're reduced to sheriff's.
Reduced to sheriff's office?
You can.
Alright, item number seven, discuss and consider voting to set the elected official salaries and other allowances. This was published in both the Gram and the Albee newspaper, I know it was, because I've got several Facebook comments on it, so.
I know it was in there.
But we have to do this every year. The changes are a three percent salary increase, which we're working on for elected officials and employees. There are some people that got a longevity increase. The by-state, my state supplement, judicial supplement was increased, they did a twenty-five percent increase for all the prosecutors and judges in the state of Texas. Overall, for all elected officials in Young County, the increase was $39,205. Doesn't seem like the water money and the grants scheme things. Do we have a motion to approve your proposed elected official salaries and other allowances? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell, is there any discussion? Any public comment on that, this isn't a public hearing, but I see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Tim is gonna pass our round sheet, we've got one, two, we've got five, seven, eight, nine elected officials in here, so we get nine of them signed, so this starts the salary grievance calendar. So, as long as we don't get a protest by this weekend, we get to move forward on that. Alright, item number eight, discuss and consider allowing the city to close off public parks, the parking on the North Ave Square from six P.M. on Friday, August eighth, until the end of the Hudson Westbrook concert. Rumor is, ten to fifteen thousand people will be coming.
So, for the record, I'm Eric Perry, City Manager, City Graham, and here with me today is Kathy Partridge, who is the Executive Director of our Division of Design Bureau, that's Brandon, that's Division Graham. As the judge mentions, on August ninth, we're expecting a fairly large crowd here for the Hudson Westbrook concert. We're doing coordination with multiple agencies, and I just want to mention, we've notified Tech dot and DPS about the concert, and expecting a large amount of pedestrian traffic in and around the square, so that they're aware of it. And we're coming to ask you, they're doing a little different setup, the stage is gonna be pushed back a little bit into Oak Street, so we'll be doing some additional closures around the square, but one of our concerns is, with that many people and trying to keep them congregated on the square, we didn't wanna really allow parking inside the square during the concert, because then you end up with people going in and out, and got all that pedestrian traffic, kinda like we do for food truck, right, where we just, we try to minimize that traffic in and out. I mentioned to the judge in my email, and of course, none of this applies to sheriff's office vehicles, official vehicles, the vehicles that, I know juvenile justice and some of the other parts overnight, we can deal with that. We're just trying to minimize anybody parking in here overnight on Friday at the end of the concert.
We typically, like juvenile probation, he lives half a block off, he typically moves it over to his house, so I'll talk to him about that.
But that's just what we're asking, trying to start on Friday evening and keep the square kinda clear, so that we don't have to deal with.
And no, we're fine with the Friday evening, we don't, like, for food truck, we close it in for it, but we're, Friday evening's gonna be plenty of time. That's great, well, that's exciting, I know my, my kids are talking about it, so.
It's a buzz everywhere.
Yeah.
One of the problems we see currently with summer concerts is, let's say, we close down just the inside inside, and someone comes in and goes to Mary's, and then when they try to leave at five o'clock, they can't pass through, because it's one lane going that way.
Yeah.
So, we're just trying to mitigate that completely.
There's some people that don't see that one white side.
I know. I would say also, we have spent considerable time with Chief Bullock and Rick Randle, coming up with safety security, blocking off the roads. We have a concern that people are going to come Friday and start camping out for their space to be close to the stage, so we're posting, no camping on the square overnight, we're directing people down to pass you guys at the Confort, putting some porta-potties out there, just to, you know, keep people from camping out on the square Friday night, but they'll be here right early Saturday morning.
Maybe they'll be buying some food at some of our places, and maybe they get bored, do a little shopping.
I would hope so.
And maybe our vendors will be smart, and maybe doing spring buildings to sell or something, I mean, they're smart.
They're gonna have food trucks.
We're gonna have three food trucks over in the plaza.
And that worked for his last concert. He had sent the last concert.
We had one, it did not go well.
We had one, it did not go well.
Really? The person who ate that, I talked to one person, hey, that's food fabulous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He had in about a three-hour time span from four o'clock till about seven, he had six.
Really? Wow. Now, this concert will be a little different.
The concert, because I think he'll be here all day.
Yeah.
And I really do think there will be a lot, since it's open singing, first come, first served.
Are they local food trucks or out of town food trucks?
Food truck, championship food trucks.
Ah. Good. Well, no one. All right, do we have a motion to approve closing off our half of the square, um, six P M. on Friday, August eighth, twenty twenty-five until, um, Sunday morning? Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes five-zero.
We could make a move to move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could self-revenue.
We can. You know what? Look how many beds we can put in.
And cots downstairs.
Yes.
Thank you, Eric.
Can we go, what, uh, I sent you an email from Jack.
Yeah.
Bakersburg, uh, and I told him that to go with that, uh, just didn't know if we need to put that on the agenda.
I don't think we need to, I really, I really.
Will the letter work that we got from the last time?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
So Jack County wants to borrow our stage, they're having a big, um.
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial event.
Hundred fifty years.
Borrow or rent?
They're borrowing.
You know, Jack County has been very helpful to us on things. Pretty valuable too, I think that's just a good neighborly thing. Um, but they, yeah, they, yeah, they wanna borrow that.
But if that letter will work, I told her we needed to either get one or fit mine, I don't wanna make sure what we have.
I'm very comfortable with that situation. I, I don't have any problem with it.
I just wanna make sure we had a, that, they sent a letter with the intent or whatever it was last time to, I think to you, didn't they? To, you know, taking responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
We're good. All right, um, item number nine, in nine forty-five A M., discuss and consider bids received on the previous chili from Gov Deals.
So bidding closed this morning at eight-thirty. I checked it yesterday, we had a very small bid, it went up quite a bit this morning. And final bid on it was one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
One one-two-five?
Mm-hmm, from the general in Jacksonville, Florida.
Okay.
That's through Gov Deals.
Do we have a motion to accept the high bid of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the chili? Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Sold.
Sold. Item number ten, ratify the lease agreement between Young County Precinct Three and the City of Alney regarding the material storage yard, so Commissioner Craig presented this last week. I got the signed contract from the City of Alney, I've executed it on the county's behalf. The executed agreement is in your packet, I just need a motion to ratify the executed agreement. Motion for Commissioner Craig, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crestwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Item number eleven, discuss and consider permission from Charlie Ratcliffe to do work on this land. Commissioner Wiley?
Uh, there was a situation there on the corner there, I've been in the past. It's a blind spot when you come off of Prior Creek, home to the inbound. And we just gotta get in there, get in there and get it all cleared out, get the party to vote, we're good, so it's, it's good now.
All right, is that a motion?
Yes.
Move a motion for Commissioner Wiley, a second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Item number twelve, discuss and consider burn restrictions. I've had a very colorful, um, texting session with the volunteer fire departments and emergency management coordinators in Young County. And I would say it is a unanimous request or a plea for us to put a burn ban on. They, they say it is super dry, we're starting to have, um, I know we had a hail, we catch on fire.
Three of them last two weeks.
Three. Can you tell me about a control.
Two, wait, I'm a drinker.
So do we have a motion to put Young County a burn ban? We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
I'll give a second, but will you be able to lift it before you're ready? And we've voted to give you that.
You guys have, you guys in the past have given me the authority to lift a burn ban. Um, how I do that, just so everybody knows, I don't just do it. I, um, I have a text group with all of our volunteer fire department chiefs, um, Jared from TBM, um, the Alney EMC, the Graham EMC, Young County EMC, who else is on there? It's a pretty big group, about fifteen people, and, um, they advise me, so I, I put out there, like I always, I mean, every week I put out there, what do you think about a burn ban, and then we have a debate, a, a, a lot of debate on that. So, um, I, if I was to lift the burn ban outside of this meeting, it would be because I had an overwhelming amount of support from those individuals.
Also, you could say you're out there making over that in the background.
But I just wanna make sure before you get into.
Yeah, we, we can lift it, yeah, no, you, um.
Without the evidence, like, like.
And I also have the ability to put a temporary burn ban on, uh, like a one-day. Yeah, one-day deal. Um, I don't like to do that, I prefer to do it here with, with all of y'all, but I do have that ability to do so. And if you guys are ever uncomfortable with me having the ability to take a burn ban off, we can remove that.
No, I like it, that way we can.
You think we need to have them put in the breaker about the burn ban, you should make note also that there's a possible fine that had been released to whoever started.
Have you ever seen a burn ban for the, the form we have? It kinda puts all, I, I, let me give you a copy of it before we leave, cause I'm about to sign it. And you have just seen, read and kinda see the, um, the penalties for violating the burn ban and what's allowed in a burn ban, what's not allowed in a burn ban. So that'd be good for you to see it.
I wish there was something to do more. We had that one there two, three years ago, had to check it out before we lit the fire.
Yeah, some people think it's, yeah, it's just a, you know, just five hundred bucks. So we have a motion for Commissioner Wiley, we have a second for Commissioner Crestwell. All in favor for a burn ban? Any opposed? Five-O, we're in a burn ban. Next is item number thirteen, a budget workshop, so we take about a ten-minute recess before we start the budget workshop?
One or two.
So move.